One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Toth, roll call please.
Yes. Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Ms. Madiger.
Here.
Mr. Shi.
Here.
Ms. Peng.
Here.
Ms. White. Mr. Mohan Patel.
Mohan Patel present.
Mr. Bural Patel. Mr. Rivera. Dr. Heda.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. Opening statement. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Edison Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education administrative offices. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on January 4th and October 4th, 2022. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and the applicable state regulations. Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to say hello, welcome everybody, some housekeeping for the board members. We have a new microphone set up in the district now, so what we're trying to do is keep the microphones where they were placed by our technicians and not drag these microphones towards us when we're talking, and when we're not talking, don't put them up and don't put them down. We're going to try to keep them where they're at. If the public, you know, has any issues hearing us, I'm sure they're going to let us know. So it does seem a little hot right now, like, not temperature, but like the feedback or something. Pat, I don't know if you could fix that. Do you hear it? It's like squeaking a little bit?
There's a beeping somewhere.
Yeah. So, okay. So anyway, thank you, everybody. I guess we could go right to our resolutions. This is for Dr. Breagan and Jonathan Toth, our business administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Board President. Before I begin, what I'd like to say initially is congratulations to the Edison High School football team and Coach Matt Fulham, assistant coaches, parents, and everyone involved. They are now in the realm of only two other football teams. The 1976 team coached by Dr. Capra and the 1991 team that was coached by Mike Wojcik and now Matt Fulham's team and his all his participants, parents, support, and everyone involved. We know it takes a village to get the team to that point. And the 2022 team will now be among those three. They also have the opportunity to play for something the other teams didn't have, a collective, not just a sectional championship, but an entire state group five championship. That's really exciting, and hopefully I'll be able to get down in Cherokee. And for me personally, one of the exciting things was several members of that team, their parents, I actually was an assistant coach in that 91 team, so it's nice to see that come full circle. And that game against North Brunswick, while one of our former players' sons was the quarterback, Mr. Garbelino, on that team, it was one of the best games I've ever seen, and a number of board members were there too. And some left, not the board members, but some of the fans left before, with three minutes left, and they missed the impact. Quite an exciting end. Two onside kicks, that's never happens, but congratulations to them. I'm sorry, I'm belaboring the point as a former football coach. Administrative appointments, you're going to see on the agenda, there's a few appointments, and most of those are related to our new business administrator, Jonathan Toth, that he's going to assume the responsibilities that we had otherwise delegated to myself or to other people, including Ms. Gluck. He will now be the Board Secretary, obviously, as part of his position. He's going to be the District Compliance Officer for public contracts. He's going to be the Oprah's Request Person, which I'm happy to hand that off to. And he's also going to be the overseer of the funds for the investments, and that requires board action. That'll be some of the administrative appointments. He's also on as the designation of depositories, and that's all our bank accounts there, that Mr. Toth signature, and it will now be on those accounts as well. We have to take formal action, you'll see that's on the agenda underneath that. He's also going to be the authorized, qualified purchasing agent, and we will have our former qualified purchasing agent, Mrs. Darian Raymond, will now be the assistant qualified purchasing agent. There's an authorization there for actually a museum in Poland to use an interview that we did here as part of a program at John P. Stevens High School a few weeks ago of Tover Friedman, a Holocaust survivor, and they requested permission for that so that they can use that interview for their museum. It's really an exciting thing to do, and we got this resolution from our Board Council to make sure everything is, I was going to say kosher, but that's inappropriate. Everything is legally appropriate to release those rights. School bus emergency evacuation drill report is there. We do that twice a year. That's listed there under the curriculum and instruction, the approval of the field trips. We got two music trips coming out of John P. Stevens High School and an FCC LA trip coming from John P. Stevens High School as well. Professional development documentation. You'll see our staff members are continuously going out to get trained in a variety of different areas, and that's reported monthly on the agenda as well. Our added district placements, we update those monthly. Students transition in and out of our programs and move in and out of our district. And there's some professional services that we approve. Again, when we approve the professional services for related services, it doesn't mean that we're using that company or using them solely, but it means we have the opportunity to use them should the need arise. Mr. Board President, I think that's the end of my resolutions.
Very good. Do we have any other resolutions to discuss? Mr. Toth?
Yes, we have approval of the standard minutes from prior session meetings. Under finance resolutions, we have motions one through three, which authorize the adoption of the Energy Incentive Savings Plan. It will also amend our long-range facilities plan and request for lease purchase financing. Motion four awards a contract to Land Tech for approximately $1.87 million for renovation to the athletic fields at JPS. Motion five awards a contract renewal to Hutchinson HVAC at no additional cost. Motion six is the approval of the submission of the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan. It's an annual plan that we have to submit to the New Jersey Department of Education. Motion seven is an acceptance of non-public funds, or non-public school aid. Motion eight authorizes the disposal of obsolete items. Motion nine authorizes the submission of a waiver application to the New Jersey Department of Education for insurance reimbursement for parent transportation contracts. Motion 10 is the approval of payment claims. Motion 11 is approval of the Board Secretary's report. Motion 12 is the payment of medical and prescription claims, and motion 13 is a request for approval of the transportation report. And that's all I have.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Can you talk a little bit more about the JPS athletic fields? Can you just explain exactly what's being done?
Right, so at JPS, prior to my arrival, I believe you guys, the team engaged an architect to do a drawing or a rendering, I should say, of a renovation to that field. So that is a baseball field, I believe it's a turf field right now. It's going to be a turf replacement, but it'll also be able to be used for soccer as well, so I believe they're going to stripe it. So you could use it for baseball in the springtime, but soccer in the fall time. So it's almost a multi-use athletic field, so it completely replaces the athletic turf on that field.
Thank you.
Well, President?
Yes, Mr. Shi.
One minor correction. It's, right now, that field is a dirt field.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies.
No problem. So this is something we've been, you know, trying to do for a year, and the approval process just dragged along, so I'm glad to see that we're finally awarding this contract to, you know, less than $2 million.
That is tremendous.
Yeah, that's lower than what we anticipated, so I hope that, you know, I don't know if the fence and everything is included in there or just a turf field.
There'll be some fans there.
Fence, fence.
Oh, they have fans. I believe baseball, no, we've got some fans.
Because for Edison High, the fence was a separate bid, so I don't know. Just a quick question for our BA. I saw the, some of the checks, and a lot of them, they have the same dollar amount for the same vendor, so I assume that you have checked out and these are the correct.
Same dollar amount for the same vendor?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you. Just want to double confirm. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Shi. Any other board member comments regarding these resolutions?
Oh, just one more thing, I'm sorry. The Comprehensive Maintenance Plan, I did not add the total. What is the total?
The total amount, I believe, is approximately about $4 million, give or take.
$4 million.
Yes, this is for your annual upkeep boiler inspections?
Yes, yes, yes. $4 million, okay, thank you. Oh, there is a total.
Dr. Breagan, just so the public's aware, about how long does it take from the moment the board decides, hey, we want to replace the turf field at J.P. Stevens? How long from that moment to now when we're awarding the bid and the construction happens? What's that timeline like?
In this instance, if you remember, and a number of the board members who are here, parents came out to speak about this probably almost two years ago, this spring would be two years, right? So it's been a year and a half. Hopefully, from the time it came up to inception to planning, the boards, as far as I remember, supported this from the beginning because, you know, we had done the field at Edison High School in 19, 2019, 2020, and obviously, you know, we wanted to have equity out of John P. Stevens Field as well. And we started the planning at that point, looking into it, seeing what we could do. And there was a significant delay though this time, Mr. Board President, due to the state, and, you know, I don't know if they're inundated with work or COVID or whatever the reason would be, but it took us a while. And there was another caveat there at John P. Stevens, which anyone knows that field or that property, it's all wetlands. So we had to get an additional Department of Environmental Protection waiver or variance, I don't know the exact term, I'm not in that space, but that took a long time. So normally, it's two years from soup to nuts, from inception, I would say, to completion. And we'll probably be around there if we can get it done in the spring, depending on the weather over the winter.
Good to know. Good.
Well, President, just to add to that. The state was having a backlog of a lot of issues that were going on with COVID and so forth, therefore, they dragged their feet on this as well. So now we're finally here, I'm glad, and our kids will get a baseball field.
Good. Well, President?
Yeah, Mr. Shi.
Can we have somebody else, other than the people on the Edison High School, to select the color of the field? I don't want another red field.
Mr. Ross, you're out of order. Do I have to take my gavel out?
I would say that they should have a green field.
Okay, thank you.
We're fortunate that grass is green, so. Yes. Any other board member comments regarding resolutions before I open it to open discussion from the board? Okay. Moving on, board member open discussion. Would anybody like to lead off?
I can start off.
Mr. Rivera. Before you arrived, we, they have new ground rules with us with these mics. We're supposed to leave them alone and not touch them, just so you know.
If you touch, do you move it up?
I understand, they said don't move it up and down, so just warning you.
I'm going to apologize to the public, first of all, because some people say they can't hear me when they were the other way.
Use your vice principal voice.
I work in elementary schools, so there's not much to argue about. But I do want to say that a lot of good things have been happening in Edison public schools. We have our football team winning, our band programs winning, you know, our scholar athletes are doing very well, so I want to recognize them all. The second thing I want to say is I apologize for being late. I had a very interesting day, I guess you would call it a very bad day, but my son ended up getting hurt at Washington School. The nurse called me, we had to take my kid to Medicare, but the nurse did a phenomenal job. My kid is fine, so I apologize for being late. The next thing you know, I went to J.P. Stevens and was sitting in the parking lot, I was saying, where's everybody? And I found out I was in the wrong spot, so that's why I'm late, and I apologize, but a lot of good things happening on. I also want to congratulate Shannon, Joe, and their other running mate, Michelle. Congratulations for your election, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Rivera.
Well, President?
Yes, Mr. Shi, you're up.
Just want to say condolences to Mrs. White. Very tragic, two family members passed away, heavily involved in the community in less than one month. So no condolences and prayers to the White family. And just want to echo what, well, President, Superintendent and Mr. Rivera said. Congratulations to Edison High Football Team, 31 years, right? 31. So, and also, congratulations to the J.P. Stevens and Edison High Band. They both won the state championship. And the thing is, for Edison High School, it's one level up, they won the state champ. I think this is, I can remember, it's probably three or four times in the past five, six years, right? So they won two, two years straight, and this is the third time or the fourth time, correct me, Mr. Ross. So congratulations, congratulations to the staff and the students for their hard work.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Shi. Ms. Madiger.
So I would also like to express my condolences to Virginia White and her family. This is the second tragedy hitting them very, in a very short period of time, and I'm sure this is particularly hard because this is, you know, the holiday time. So my thoughts and prayers are with the White family. That's all.
Thank you very much. Any other board member comments? Mr. Patel.
So condolences to the whole White family and its loss of, take this, I sit back?
Yeah, sit back.
Yes, you could just leave the mic there and project.
Okay, so, yeah, it's very tragic and really very, very sorry for loss of Ginny, what happened. Congratulations to all the students of all the schools and everything that's happening in the schools, especially Saturday, what's going to happen, hopefully we'll win, right? So we'll be in the finals, so that's, that's a big news. And the entire band teams, everyone is performing so well, that's a pride for the district. And when we see the news, nothing is better than that. Congrats to Shannon, great job with the elections. Mr. Romano, congratulations, heartily congratulations, and Vishal, who will be the new board members, and, you know, we look forward to work with everyone, collaborate, and move the district forward, do the good things for the district, hopefully, next year, right? So let's hope for the best. And we had, we went to Atlantic City for the school board convention last month, and there was a lot of learning in there, a lot of fun was also involved, administrators were with us as well. So it was, it was a fun time, I look forward to again next year. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Ms. Peng.
Yeah, I just want to say my condolences to Ginny and Tommy. My heart is always with you guys. If you guys need anything, you know, we'll be here. And also, congratulations to Eagles, you know, Edison High. I won't be there tomorrow, but I will be cheering from, you know, another middle school event that I'm hosting, so go Eagles.
Thank you. Any other board member comment? Dr. Heda?
Yeah, just mirror everything that was said prior to me, but just one thing, I want to highlight Ginny's strength in all of this. The last couple months here have been very difficult for her, and I think we all should take that model in strength for, as a human being, losing a husband and losing a son is never easy, but she continues to stay focused, and seeing her tonight puts strength in all of us. So during these holiday season, hopefully, everybody keeps them in mind in their family, and we send our regards to Tommy too, who's a staff member in our district. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Patel.
Well, President, thank you. My heartfelt condolences to the White family in regards to the tragedy that has be held at this point, and I want to also congratulate the Eagles and the bands in regards to their victories, and also the column two team of Shannon, Peng, Joe Romano, and Vishal Patel for winning this election and making sure that we put our students first, and I look forward to working with you all coming January. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess it's my turn. Obviously, I want to lead off with condolences to Mrs. White and Tommy. I know the family well, we just talked about this in regards to Anthony, and it's just heartbreaking, and I feel like it could be a board meeting or a board, a community meeting, seeing the people at the funeral home supporting this family, so it's truly a testament to their dedication to the township. I know equally that they're so pumped about the success of our, our students in the district, so I'd be remiss not to congratulate the same folks that you guys did. At Edison High specifically, we did have a band that won the championship. This band dedicates their whole, you know, mornings and nights to these practices, and this board, what we can do for them is not much. We can do the, you know, the instruments or provide support and clap when they do well, but these students, from morning till night, they work, 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 work hard, and what they do to win those championships cannot be understated. They travel to places like Delaware. I think Edison High wound up at MetLife Stadium a few hours before the Giants or Jets are playing, their marching on that field is very cool. J.P. Stevens the same, their marching Hawks did a great job, they won their championship. And then, of course, the football, it was the best football game I've ever seen in my life against North Brunswick, that includes all professional, college, everything. I can't imagine a more exciting game. I'm glad that I kind of walked back from my car after, I said, whoa, I think we might come back here. And it was just such a wonderful experience to be there, so congrats to the Edison High Football Team. We also had a cross-country champion from Edison High School. It's the first one, I think, Mr. Ross, you could correct me, but I think first time we've had a cross-country champion in many, many years. Since Jimmy Carter was president. All right, yeah, so it's been a while. So cross-country, nothing seems to scream dedication more than running and trying to beat time, so that was really great. And I hope to honor these students when we have the opportunity, I think in January, we honor students and, and I'm sure all of these students will be invited to come and really celebrate what they've done. So with that said, you know, I could move on to public comment. Any other board member comments beforehand? Okay. So as everyone knows, we get six minutes total to talk, and all members, all speakers are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others whose legal rights may be affected. Please note, while it is not the board's intention to stifle comments on matters of legitimate concern to the school community, the public should be aware that if their statements violate the rights of others under the law governing defamation or invasion of privacy, they may face personal liability to the injured party. If speakers are uncertain of the legal ramifications of their comments, the board urges them to seek guidance beforehand from their own legal advisor. So thank you very much. Would anybody like to start off public comments? Mr. Venkata.
Good evening, everyone. My heartfelt condolences to Mrs. White, her family, and congratulations to Shannon, Joe, and Vishal. So it looks like the public wanted a change. I think two board members are leaving and two new members are coming. I think Shannon, it shows that how much public wanted you to be on the board. So congratulations again, and I also would like to bring up one point that Cristo has got 2,000 votes. He was prohibited not to be on the social media, he didn't knock the doors, he got more than 2,000 votes without spending a single penny. I think that kind of things show that, you know, people desperately looking for some change. And Jerry, I don't mind EHS to be red, you know why I feel it needs to be red. So, Mr. Ross, I think I hope you'll continue the red over there, and we root for the red. And another thing that I don't know why it didn't, you know, represented here, I think a couple of weeks back, EHS team has won a championship for quiz ball, and I wish and hope that you guys will list all these things that EHS and JPS won as a celebration, not only one or two. So this is a good motivation for those quiz ball students doing their own hard work without any, you know, not much support, financial support. And I think, Dr. Breagan, we miss you, to be honest with you, obviously, and I sent an email to Mr. Benedict about sending, why school district is sending the coupons. So when did we start becoming sponsoring, supporting, encouraging the big firms like DHW and all these companies? I think, I hope it will be stopped, and some people raised a concern that, oh, I hope his email address is not hacked. So there were doubts raised as well. And also, I think, this is a question from Cristo to Board President, and I think, Mr. Doug, Cristo would like to know that, did you spend 30 hours with the legal lawyers to prevent him not to talk and to actually come up with the disclaimer? So he said that he's going to come next meeting, but he wanted to ask that, is that the true statement that you spent 30 hours of lawyers' time to prevent public coming and talking here? And I think the lawyers' invoice shows, oh, protecting elected officials from the public. I thought that it should, it should be the opposite, that protecting public from the elected officials. So I hope you'll have an answer to that. And Dr. B, I sent an email to you, Ms. Quick from JPS, she's new, I didn't want to comment about her ability, but I wrote, I brought an issue here, I think, from the Curriculum Committee needs to pay an attention to that, a student who was yes, honor student, AP Computer Science, now failed in the first marking period, and the teacher didn't share any rubric, didn't set the expectations for the project, and he gave zeros to the students because they copied it from the internet. Lot of IT people, how many of us really code? We just go to Google it and bring the code. So there should be a warning or a punishment of 20 points or 30 points, but giving zeros at the whims and phantoms of the student, teacher, and that teacher is young and inexperienced, I hope the Curriculum Committee will pay attention to it. There are 10 people got zeros and fifties because one teacher has decided, no rubric, no need to follow the rules, and he can do it, and the supervisor is supporting it. And Ms. Quick told me that, oh, she cannot talk individual things with me, I'm fine, but as an admin of parents' group, I truly wanted to prevent any lawsuits because I hope there is not a systematic targeting of certain people to give zeros and fifties. And JP students or EHS students, they do take APs because they want to show the rigor, and now we are failing those kids? I think that is something that Curriculum Committee should pay an attention to it, and I will save my rest of my time. Mr. Doug, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I respond, Mr.?
Yes, Dr. Breagan.
We'll look into that, Venkata, with the, whatever that issue is with that science class, I'll follow up with Mrs. Quick and see what we can do. Regarding the DSW advertisement that went out, that was a mistake, I'll take full ownership for that. It was supposed to be connected to a fundraiser for a group of some of our students with special needs, and that wasn't part of that, that went out, so that's totally a mistake, and it's totally my responsibility, so I apologize. And I don't even shop at DSW, even though some board members didn't make that accusation at the football game.
That was Brian.
That was actually pretty funny.
And as far as the disclaimer I read before public comment, I received that disclaimer from, from Mr. Rubin, who's just sitting right to my left here, and I don't, I did not spend any meeting time with Dr., with David Rubin to author this disclaimer. I have a feeling you've used it before, correct?
It's been used by a number of districts.
Thank you.
It's a public service announcement.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Ms. Conway.
Elizabeth Conway, 20 Netherwood Circle. My only question is regarding the J.P. Stevens varsity field. My son played on that field many years ago, and I guess it was just as, almost as bad when he played on it.
The football field?
No, the baseball field.
Baseball.
And I knew it was a problem that was longstanding, waiting for approval and everything. The only question I have is it's also going to be used as the varsity soccer? Did I hear that correctly?
Not, not varsity.
Was you lining it up?
Not the varsity soccer, like they do the field at Edison High School, they have, it has other uses, but it's not typically any varsity sports other than baseball. It's not going to have goals on it, and it's not going to be, it's not large enough to do that. But we do put other lines on it so they can practice on and do other, other things when baseball's not using it.
And this is specifically just the varsity field that's getting the turf? Because I know off to, off to the side, is there going to be a rendition of what this is going to look like? Because I know that is very tight fitting back there.
Yeah, I think we have a drawing, but I'll see if we can get a render and put it out there. You know, we went over that with the architect, that's DMR is working on that particular project. And, you know, we're excited to do it, as I said, it took longer than we thought, and we all, I think, recognize that that field is in need of repair, and this will be an additional, a great change, and hopefully, if we could silence that German Shepherd at the guy's house behind, that would be even better. But one step at a time.
Very good, thank you.
We're going to put a high, tall fence, totally block it.
Yeah, that dog is big.
Any other public comment? Yes?
Do we have to come here? Sorry, this is our first time.
Yes, please step to the microphone so everybody at home can see you and, and hear you.
Good evening, board members, and good evening, fellow parents. My name is Nitya Shivaram Krishnan. We live in Stephenville Parkway, I'm accompanied by my neighbor, Reba, as well. So we are parents representing ML5 bus route, and we are here to raise some concerns about our bus routing. I must disclaim already and say, I think Dr. Bergen has been involved, and he's done a lot of effort in fixing some of the issues we've previously raised, so just So just to give you a little bit of background, it's been two months since the beginning of the school, we've had major concerns with ML5 bus routing. For whatever reason, I believe there was shortage and everything else. The buses were routed in a direction where the kids were going in completely opposite direction to their standard routes for a period of time. So it took two months. As of November 2nd, the route finally got resolved. But again, as of yesterday, we've heard that the driver's been asked to take the older route because there's a kid or few kids now who have, who've been added back into the route. What this means is it's adding another 25 minutes. Again, the first two months, the kids were always going into school at 9:15 or 9:10. They were always missing their first period, and obviously, we're all concerned about that, and we were concerned that that's going to happen again. So the request to the board, and hopefully, this feeds back to the Transportation Department, is if they can relook at some of these bus routes and make sure it's all properly set up and we don't have to deal with this. It's, again, issues both in the morning and in the evening. So that's the only thing I wanted to raise to the board.
Thank you very much. Dr. Bragan.
We will definitely take a look in that. And if you're on Stephenville Parkway, towards Park, you're probably the first one on and the last one off, so it's probably one of the later ones, right? Coming from ML, coming from ML Park.
Yes.
All right, we'll take a look at that.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your patience. We have been trying to work, and we had some difficulties, but...
Yeah, I mean, again, as of November 2nd, we thought, we thought the issue was resolved. It's just come back again this week, so we don't want it to continue, so I appreciate your help.
We will look at it tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, President.
Mr. Shi.
Yeah, I forgot to mention, because, you know, she brought up, there's also a bus route, Woodbrook 9, WB9. If you guys can take a look at the route that's taken, because I was, I'm told that it goes to Stephenville Parkway and it goes to Harding Avenue, the way that it's going around, it's making a couple runs. That's what I was told. So it's not efficient. So if we can look at the route for that, for that bus, WB9. Thank you.
WB9, Woodbrook 9?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
There's two things I should have mentioned in the board member comment period. First of all, I was remiss to congratulate Joe, Shannon, and Vishal. Congratulations. The second thing is regarding busing. This year, busing has been an enormous topic of conversation internally. The board, I mean, please understand that the board members that you see here, all of us, I think, have all addressed individual bus issues with the administration. We all have the same sentiment, that we'd love to be able to just drive the buses in the morning if we, if we could. And Jonathan Toth, who you see here, who started just last month, he's our business administrator, and he's working very hard to assist our transportation folks to make sure that the buses are doing what they're supposed to be doing. So there has been response behind the scenes. Sometimes you see it at different times, but I want you to know that as a board, I could probably speak for every single person you see up here, it's on the radar, big time, big time. So, but without you speaking up and without the emails and everything else, nothing happens, so we appreciate you coming tonight. Any other public comment? Anybody? Okay, motion to end public comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any ayes. Okay. Mr. Toth, I'd like to adjourn to privileged session. If you want to read that resolution, please.
Yes. Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Edison, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey as follows. The public shall be excluded from the discussion of and action upon the here and after specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows. Attorney-client privileged discussion regarding student matters, health insurance, contract dispute, litigation brought by former employees and students, ETA grievance per unfair labor practices, personnel matters, including matters related to superintendent transition plan. It is anticipated at this time at the board that the above stated subject matter shall be made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists. This resolution takes effect immediately.
Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn to privileged session.
Motion.
Mr. Patel, motion second.
Second.
Ms. Madiger, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
We plan to come back and vote?
Oh, thank you. There's a, there's a chance we might come back and vote.
Okay, thank you.